Right, good evening everybody and welcome to the third and last edition of the OCA Town Hall Meetings. We invited the two candidates who polled highest in the first of the Town Hall Meetings to join us again today. They were Kirsten Perking, an independent candidate who doesn't belong to any party, which is why she's an independent, and Sharifa Job, who is with the Good Party. And then at the second meeting that we had, the two candidates who polled highest were Claude Rousseau and Piko Lomanzin Gonyama from the ANC. As I said just now, I did speak to him on the phone about 10 minutes ago and he would say he would join us at exactly 6:30, he was still tied up in the meeting. Unfortunately, he hasn't joined us yet. Hopefully, he'll be with us shortly. So I'm going to, first of all, there have been a lot of questions from people about how does it work when you go to the polls on Monday and you have to tick, or rather put a cross on two different ballot papers? So I'm just going to hand over to Nishendra Mudli, ask him just to explain that process and then I will take the meeting from there on. So over to you, Nishendra.
Okay, thanks Edwin. I've just come in just to explain just that one issue around how does the election occur and how many ballot papers do you have and what are each of those ballot papers for? To explain to everyone that if you are registered in a metropolitan area, like the city of Cape Town is or the city of Johannesburg, in each of those metropolitan areas, you will be given only two ballot papers. If you hear about three ballots, that usually applies outside metropolitan areas, where outside the metro you would be given three ballots. One is for your ward councillor, your second ballot is for your local council and your third for the district council. But that doesn't apply, as I said, to metropolitan areas where you're only given two ballots when you go to the voting station at which you are registered. Those two ballots, the first ballot is for the ward councillor and here you will be voting for an individual, so their name will be specified on the ballot paper and you are voting for an individual that might be either independent or from a political party. And you are voting for the person who you, who's going to represent your ward in the council. And effectively, the winner takes all in terms of the way that ballot is counted. So the winner does not have to have a majority, it just needs to have the highest amount of votes in that ward and that person secures the seat of being your elected ward councillor for the ward in which you are voting for. As I said, that can be either an individual from a party or an individual who's an independent. Your second ballot paper is called your proportional representation ballot and here you are voting for the party. And you are voting for a party, you will already see party names, right, and party acronyms. So you will be voting only for a party that you choose to best run the municipality. So in this case, the city of Cape Town, the party that you would deem to best run, the city of Cape Town, would be who you would vote for on your proportional ballot paper. Here, the total amount of proportional representation seats is determined overall through a calculation of the number of voters that voted for a party. It does include the parties that you voted for on the ward ballot, but the calculation is quite a complicated exercise to explain, so I'll save you that and put a resource into the chat box at the end of this discussion that demonstrates how that's calculated. But the important thing to note is one ballot is for your ward candidate who's going to represent your ward in a council. Cape Town has 217 council seats and half of these are ward councillor seats. So you'll be voting for the ward candidate for Ward 57 on one ballot and on the other ballot you would be voting for the party that would be, you would want to run the city of Cape Town. That party then has a role in electing who, or appointing who's the, who's going to be the mayor. So you're not effectively electing the mayor directly in your PR vote, you are voting for a party and that party will determine who its mayoral candidate would be and which is particularly complicated in a context where there might be coalitions and so on. But generally, the party would have as the first person on their PR list, the mayoral candidate that they are putting forward. So in a nutshell, that explains the process. I'm going to hand over back to Edwin to take you through the discussion for today.
Thank you, Nishendra. Right, so what we're going to do is, I've collated, there were a lot of questions that came through in the two previous meetings' chat boxes and also a number of people who emailed questions to me. I'm just going to go with three of the sort of most common questions which came through. I'm going to ask each of the candidates to respond very briefly, maximum of two minutes, to the three questions and then we're going to open it up to the floor. I'll talk more about that when we open it up to the floor. So the first question, which a lot of people felt was important, is, does your party have a stated position on climate change and strategies to address this at the local level in our neighbourhood? And if yes, what is your strategy? Let's go with Kirsten first. Kirsten, can you unmute yourself, please?
Okay. There we go. All right.
Kirsten, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, go Kirsten.
So the question, just to repeat it, is, does your party have a stance on climate change and what are, what is my plan to address it in the ward? Yes?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Well, being a millennial and 27 years old, climate change has been a topic that I've been talked about since primary school. So it's foremost on my mind when addressing any issue. For instance, what we are currently living in is a very wasteful economy. We prioritise one-use plastic items over more sustainable options. So as ward councillor moving forward, my administration firstly will lead by example. We will begin adopting more sustainable practices, like reducing our paper waste and plastic use and really prioritising recycling, reuse and upcycling. And that will not only be in the way that we deal with the physical environment, but even in by mimicry terms, how we even deal with our social environment. Because when we address environmental issues, we also need to take into considerations the social issues that communities are facing. Because it would be unfair to consider a person who is dealing with poverty on a daily basis and ask them to make a more sustainable choice, when that sustainable choice is usually expensive. So one of the ways that I was looking at is at community gardens for one, so that there is a sustained food resource that many communities, regardless of economic background, can get behind and maybe making use of the people in the neighbourhood who are looking for a sense of belonging.
30 seconds, Kirsten.
So this will both address the environmental and social issues and give better and more meaning to addressing these issues than just coming to the community with a one-sided argument to look at the environmental issue. I also want to look at the heritage of an environment, because when we look at the environment, it's not only...
Kirsten, sorry, time is up. We're going to be very strict. Thank you Kirsten.
It's okay.
Right, Claude, would you like to answer the same question, please? Claude Rousseau, thank you.
Hi, good evening all. My name is Claude Rousseau. Yes, climate change. Of course, this is not an issue that local municipal that cannot necessarily look at, but just hearing once again reminds me about the challenge that we face and seeing that, looking at the polls outside where we busy campaigning, just looking at the polls. I think to help the environment, we can start there. After elections, to make sure that we recollect all our posters and get it out of the way. That is certainly one very pragmatic way in which we can help to save our environment. Cape Town being a coastal city is probably one of the places or spaces in South Africa that is for the most, the worst affected by climate change, the ocean. We currently are suffering, I mean, I've got friends that's in farming from decreased rainfalling patterns. So of course, we seriously need to look at how we can deal with this best and like the previous candidates already mentioned, one of the things is to look at recycling, looking at waste, that the materials that we use and put out there in public are recyclable and that, yeah, basically that we can reuse it. But yeah, we've got to look at our oceans.
30 seconds. 30 seconds.
So yeah, that would for me and from my point of view, definitely be one of the areas that we need to give attention to. Thank you.
Thank you Claude. And Sharifa, I'm going to ask you now to respond, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Hi, good evening all. This is Sharifa from the Good Party. Yes, the Good Party, one of our, one of our topics at our manifesto is environmental justice. Every resident deserves a clean, green and healthy neighbourhood. Yes, we are definitely into climate change, into changing the way we think, into how we destroy and how we use our plastics, our papers, et cetera. The good will drive a city that is led to a transition to resilient and a greener economy. We want to procure cheaper and renewable power and also to disinvest from the fossil fuels. Because we have, we have our air pollutions, our sea pollutions, our land pollutions. And as I've spoken to various people from the city and especially the illegal dumping, we want to bring it to the schools to teach the children and to reset their minds on how to keep the place clean, how to recycle, not to be wasteful, to plant trees. We've spoken to some NGOs also to start community gardens in our areas here in Ward 57, so that we can engage and teach that you can sustain yourself with your community gardens.
Good, Sharifa.
With your community gardens and also encourage at school level that everybody should be recycling and upcycling and practise, sustainable practise by keeping the city clean.
Thank you, Sharifa. I was, for those of you who've joined a little bit late, I did actually speak to the ANC candidate a few minutes before the meeting started. He assured me he would be with us at four o'clock, sorry, at 4:06. I don't see his name here. Piko, are you maybe under somebody else's name? Otherwise, we're going to have to move to the next question. Piko, if you are in the meeting, can you just post in the chat box what name you're under? Or otherwise, change your name by hovering the cursor over your name and you can rename yourself if you've appeared under somebody else's name or if you're borrowing somebody's computer, for example. Okay. Right, I don't see any sign of Piko. My next question, again, which I'm going to address to the three candidates who are with us, is from a community activist in Woodstock, but I think it's a very pertinent question. And she asked at our second Town Hall Meeting, "What has any of you done for our community programmes and for the NPOs that operate within our ward? Which of these NPOs would you support and why? And how would you support them and how would you support other community programme work for the benefit of the people living in Ward 57?" And she ends it with a very important question, "How will you be present? How will you be approachable? How will you manage communications with the people in the ward?" So we'll go with the same order again. Kirsten, would you like to respond first?
Oh sure. Could I ask you to please post the question into the chat? It was just a bit of a long one and I want to make sure to answer it fully.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't do that right now Kirsten, but it was, you got the gist of what Hester was asking. It's how would you support community-based programmes or community-based NGOs who are working for the good of the community in your, in our ward? And then very importantly, how will people be able to get in touch with you? How will you be approachable? How will you manage your communications with your ward?
Right. Well, to address the second question first, in terms of communication, I will firstly create clear and simple processes to gain information and obtain communication with myself. At the moment, there are a lot of gatekeepers between our ward councillors and the community. Then with regards to just having regular community engagements so that we can stay up to date on current issues that we are addressing and new issues that might arise in the community. I have various platforms, both online and sort of offline. I am partial to the written word, so letters, email, phone calls, as well as WhatsApp, Twitter, Instagram and Facebook are various means that I can be reached and I manage them myself personally at the moment. And obviously, as ward councillor, I will have help with these sorts of things. However, I do want to give that personal touch, because that's what I aim to do, especially as an independent, is I want to not only be present, but I want to be dedicated to the community. I want my face to be synonymous with on-the-ground communication. Then with regards to the different NGOs and community groups, like civic organisations, rate payers and neighbourhood watchers. Firstly, I will provide support because as a ward councillor, I have access to certain resources. These resources are currently being withheld because there is not a good communication process with the ward councillors. Now, as ward councillor, I want to provide that bridge where we can work alongside each other and right from the very start, engage with these groups to, in the planning processes of whatever solutions we move forward with, instead of the retroactive approach, where we come after we've come up with a solution.
Thank you Kirsten. Right, next to take the floor, Claude Rousseau. Claude, would you like to unmute yourself?
Yeah. The, I think it's one of the most important things of the local government elections is, because it's so close to the people. Non-profit organisations in many cases, in many instances, are the backbone of communities, wards, cities. It's around those organisations that, that a lot of communities are built and that can only strengthen the community. So for me, as a ward councillor, it would be important to obviously liaise with these different non-profit organisations. I would start up, and that would be my first, the first thing on my agenda should I get elected, is to start with ward committee. A ward committee, because it would be impossible for one person to liaise with all the various stakeholders within the ward, the different organisations that is going. My involvement with the area over the past two years has been through the fact that we work out in the area and especially the homeless people and the people that stay out on the street are there. So yes, ward committees would be the start for me, to inform me, to investigate matters. And obviously, ward meetings, I would be available through social media, which is nowadays very accessible to all through Facebook, WhatsApp, Twitter and all these other various platforms. So that would be the basis of my engagement and constant engagement with the people on the ground.
Thank you very much, Claude. And right, we go to our third candidate, Sharifa. Sharifa, can you unmute? Thank you.
Hi, sorry about that. Hi, okay. So I've been doing projects in the community, five projects per annum since 2018. And I have two playtimes, meaning I call the children or we advertise, the children Woodstock Salt River, we have a playtime, we do games with them, we talk to them about bullying, if they've got any problems, who to go to, to adults, to teachers, et cetera. We give them whistles, we call it the, if something happens or they feel afraid, they can blow their whistle. And then we have playtime and until lunchtime, we feed them and then we give them a food parcel and we make a date again for another one. We normally have one in March and then in October. Then I also have my Youth Day programme and a Women's Day programme, June and August. Normally, pre-COVID, I used to do three schools at a time. We invite the rape crisis, social development, visible policing, law enforcement, everybody to come talk and share information, the clinics also to share information with the children, with the youth and give them pamphlets, et cetera, and contact numbers if they need to be in contact with any of these organisations. I also have at the end of the year, another big playtime and a big lunch and I also see that the children get toiletries and once again, they get a food parcel. Then I've worked with Missing Persons Unit, they also ran a soup kitchen here on the border of Observatory and Salt River, the Panthers Arts and I've also spoken to Surplus People's Project, they run the project where they do vegetable gardens in the community, they teach the children, they set it up, et cetera. So how, which NGOs in the wudu do I work with? That anything, I work with soup kitchens, youth projects, neighbourhood watchers, wherever I feel that I can contribute, whether it is I'm linked with private companies for them to get donations, whether it be goods or financial.
Sorry, time's up.
Sorry.
We'll get time to get back to you later. Thank you. Right, I just want to ask again if the ANC candidate, Piko Gonyama, is maybe in the room under somebody else's name, because I can't pick him up. And as I said earlier, I did speak to him at 6:25 and he said he would be joining us at 6:30. Okay, so just before we go to the last questions, which I'm going to pose and then we're going to open it up to the floor, I just want to mention that I had a number of people contacting me today because they were commenting on the posts, which you will have seen both in the invite to this meet and the posts on the OCA Facebook page, where I've pointed out that people in Ward 57 are very disappointed that the DA candidate, Yusuf Mohammed, didn't accept any of our invitations to join any of the Town Hall Meetings. And in fact, a couple of people got hold of me today and said, "Do you have any proof that he actually got your invite?" Yes, I have loads of proof that he got my invite and he didn't only get it from me. I've had three people tell me that they also got hold of him and asked him, please, to respond to the invitations. Why am I going on about the DA candidate when there are like 10 or 12 other people, other candidates who didn't respond? It's for the very simple reason that the DA got 75% of the vote in this ward in the last election. And so it's very likely, unfortunately, that the DA candidate, irrespective of who that may be, will probably become our ward councillor. And I thought, you know, it's the least that Yusuf Mohammed could do to at least meet his electorate in one of these meetings and respond to the questions that I'm sure you would all like to be posing to him. So I thought, okay, I'll try one more time. And around lunchtime today, I phoned him again. There was no, I sent him a WhatsApp message and I said, "People are wondering why you haven't joined our meeting. I'm going to give you a last chance and I'm sending the invitation to today's meeting again." His response was simply that he had only seen the invitation on Monday, yesterday, and he'd already made other arrangements. I can actually prove that it's not true, he did not see the invitation for the first time yesterday. But anyway, I think that's enough said about the DA and the way in which a DA candidate believes in the importance of communication with his electorate and with his ward. So I'm going to move now to the third and final question before I throw it open. When I throw it open to the floor, please, can people limit their questions to no more than one minute? If you exceed one minute in asking your question, I'm afraid I'm going to have to mute you. You may ask your question by either raising your hand, you may ask it to all three of the candidates or you may direct it at one of the three candidates. And you can also, if you don't want to raise your hand and speak, you can also post your question in the chat box, myself and Nishendra is helping me with the backend. We will monitor the posts in the chat box. So my question now to the three candidates who are with us is, "What is your stance on the River Club development?" I'm sure I don't need to explain to you what the River Club development is and what a disaster it will be if this development were to be allowed to carry... and uh what a disaster it will be if this development were to be allowed to carry on. And more importantly, if you are elected to council, uh what will you do um about whatever your stance is on the River Club development? How will you implement what you believe needs to be done? So I guess we'll just stick to the same order. Kirsten, would you like to respond first?
There we go. Yes, I'm actually glad you asked this question. It is no secret that I am not for the development. Not because I am against development in general, however, I do not believe that development should destroy or supersede the preservation and protection of our heritage and culture or the ecological preservation of the environment around us. When it comes to the Two Rivers urban development, I believe that there was, there is still more to be done to hopefully recover what has already begun to be destroyed. And as ward councillor, firstly, I will stand with my community on this. If, if there is a, a unanimous decision to stand against the decision to destroy the urban development, they, oh sorry, the Two Rivers Urban Develop, uh, keep saying developments because that's what's currently happening, the Two Rivers Park, then I will stand with them. I will, I will not be shy in voicing the concerns of the community and not only voicing them, but actually doing something about it. Challenging the, the parties that believe that our heritage and culture can be bought with jobs that um they've created a soc- a s- society that does not allow us to both appreciate our culture and earn a decent living. We shouldn't have to sacrifice one for the other. We should be able to live in the equa- equality that our democracy is supposed to afford us. So with regards to this development, I, I'm just there is, there's a lot that can be done and there's a lot that I would like to do, especially as ward councillor in terms of working with the community who are already through their own means addressing the issue. But with the resources of a ward councillor and someone on the council to help bolster that resolve, then perhaps we would be a little bit more successful. And we need councillors that are both brave and insightful to stand with the community. Thank you.
Thank you Kirsten. Um, I'm going to go, uh, I'm going to ask Sharifa now to respond. Sharifa, I'm going to uh add a little bit to the question. Uh, unlike Kirsten, you are not only standing as Sharifa Job, you are also standing to represent the Good Party. So please can you tell us what the Good Party's attitude is towards the River Club development as well as your own personal attitude? Sharifa?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, yeah. About of contention, we are not necessarily for it and we hear all the grievances. You know, we were not involved in the deal itself, but we are committed to ensuring the sanctity of the First Nation people going forward. You know, we believe when, when land is being developed, it must be developed and it must be beneficial to the, to the, to the community. This development is destroying heritage. It is a shame to see what is happening here. It is, it was such a beautiful, beautiful heritage to drive past there and now we see all this that it's going on. If we win the elections as the Good Party, we commit to a thorough review of the deal and as a matter of urgency and priority, given our skepticism of the motives in the property development in this issue. We hear all the, the, the grievances and we are definitely gonna address all of that if we are in office.
Uh, Sharifa, you done?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, thank you very much Sharifa. Um, Claude, same question to you please. Uh, Sharifa, sorry, can you just switch your camera off and mute yourself? Thank you. Um, Claude, same question to you, bearing in mind that uh you are standing as uh Claude Rousseau, but you are also standing to represent your party's spectrum, National Party. So if you could please uh respond to my question both from your party's point of view and from your personal point of view. Uh, sorry, I've just gotta find you so I can unmute you. There we go. You should be unmuted. Yep, thank you Claude.
Hi, um, yes, indeed a very contentious key um subject. Um, even within our party, the, we had a discussion about it, I think about six months ago. And obviously they are contesting views about the thing. But the one thing that, that we as a party have decided is one, we will, will allow ourselves to be guided, number one, by the community that would be most affected um by this uh development. Um, and, and that is, that is our point of view, that is where we stand and that's where, again, consultation and we are aware of um people from the area that has already taken up the issue. And that is where our loyalty, or my loyalty as the potential ward councillor for this area would lie when it comes to this specific sensitive uh issue. Um, yes, we cannot allow um, like uh our first competition, they said, allow uh, eh, to us to be dictated by money alone because there's a lot of other matters that, that uh is at stake here. So our position is we will be guided by professionals, but most of all, we will allow ourselves to be guided through engagement with the local community. That is our stand on that uh issue. Thank you.
Claude, thank you. I, I'm just gonna ha- give a little follow-up question. You, you said at the beginning you will consult with the community most affected. Um, who, who do you see, who is that community that you consider to be most affected by the development? Uh, hold on Claude, you seem to have become muted again. Let me see if I can unmute you. Right, try and unmute yourself now Claude.
Yeah, the, the, the indigenous people would obviously be the community that would be, would come to mind here that, that we would definitely consider. But uh, like I said, we would uh consider and consult with all relevant stakeholders. Everybody um that are involved here, that, that will be affected by this will be consulted.
Thank you Claude. Uh, thank you Claude. Before I throw it open to the floor, I just want to again make a remark that uh we really went out of our way to get the DA candidate Yusuf Mohammed uh to participate in any of the three town hall meetings. Uh, we felt it was really important to put in an extra effort uh to get Yusuf to, to join one of these meetings because of the simple fact that his party and the candidate representing his party in the previous elections got seventy-five percent of the vote. The fact that uh currently the DA, his party, is also the ruling party within the city council means it's very important for us to have heard their opinion on the matters which affect us in Ward fifty-seven. And I find it a real shame, to put it mildly, that the DA is not interested in communicating with its voters. I also said earlier that I had spoken to the ANC candidate, the second most important party's candidate uh in these elections. I spoke to him at twenty-eight minutes past six and told him please, he had two minutes within which to join the meeting. He said he was currently in a meeting, but he would join us within two minutes. I'm afraid that unless he's here under a different name, there's still no sign of the ANC candidate. So here, Ward fifty-seven voters, nineteen thousand of us in the twenty sixteen election, by the way, uh are having to deal with the fact that the two biggest parties in the city council are not interested in communicating with their group. So I'm throwing it open to the floor now. If you have a question, please uh raise your hand or post your questions uh in the um chat box, please. No one's raising their hand. Okay, got you. Yeah.
I, uh, I've got a question to raise for, for the candidates. Um, I'm Nishandra Moody and uh my question is very similar to the question on the River Club. Uh, there are often policy decisions that as a ward candidate, as a ward councillor, you will be facing uh in the municipal council. How will you develop a mandate for how you are going to vote on those particular issues? Uh, and particularly for those that are representing parties, how will you, if there's any tension between what, how your ward feels on a particular issue versus what your party position is on that particular issue? How will you reconcile that tension? Which way will you go? Who do you primarily account to?
Uh, Kirsten, I'm gonna let you go first again. Let me just find your name so I can unmute you. Okay, Kirsten, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay. Well, I feel like this one is kind of straightforward for myself. As an independent, my, my mandate is first and foremost to my community. So that's how I'll decide to uh make my decisions on any policies that come forward. Uh, how can I, how I will stay up to date on these, these, this mandate is my mandate will be um informed uh by the community through regular community engagements. And contention, I will, uh, there won't be much contention because my voice is for the ward. That is what it means to be an independent.
Again, I'm going to ask Claude to respond more. Uh, Claude, you should be able to unmute now.
Hi. There we go. Um, of course, um, I'm, I'm standing as a, as a ward candidate within a party. Um, but availing myself for the ward. Um, because as I've said in the previous meeting, I do not stay in, in the ward. I have close relationships with working with the people on the street there. And that is uh one of the things that has inspired me to avail myself to stand in this ward is, is to understand my, what my party stands for. Um, every municipality in South Africa is, is currently guided by the Integrated Development Plan for Local Governments. And of course, if, all the decisions that are made are based basically, or should at least be based on, on that plan. So, and, and that plan, the, the, the basis of that plan is community involvement. How it affects the community whenever decisions are made, how it affects that local community. Um, so of course I would be, be guided um by the ward that I put that ditch where my first loyalty would lie. Of course, from time to time, it, it might, uh, tension might arise um if uh decisions have to be made. But for me, first and foremost, that would be, and if there is tension and, 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 and and it can, they can, they need to be some negotiations, I will obviously take if there's a different position from what my community wants, I would bring it back to them, report back to them, speak to them. Um, so that we are clear of what our mandate is and, and that is it. It will be my ward's mandate that I would take forward into council. Um, so yeah, that, that is, that is my position basically on, on when it comes to these issues and, and matters within council. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, thank you Claude. Uh, Sharifa, over to you. Mute you, right, you should be able to unmute yourself now Sharifa. Uh, sorry Sharifa, I've lost you amidst all the people here. All right, now you should be able to unmute yourself Sharifa.
Okay, hi. Right, my my ward, my ward comes first and foremost, my ward will be electing me to be the spokesperson. So, and my, and my, and my ward knows that my word is my honour, I will fight for them. If there is tension, I hope there won't be, but you know, we, we always need to negotiate and talk and, and, and listen to all the parties involved. Um, but because of our mandate, our economic justice, our social justice, our environmental justice, this is why I'm on board with the Good Party, because we want, we want to involve the board, we want to involve the community. We want what is best for our communities. So we will do always what is in the interest of our community and our ward. And as Claude has said, you know, uh, we, we are governed and, and we should always negotiate and take our ward and our people's word, feelings and, 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 and their interest into consideration because they come first.
Thank you so much Sharifa. Okay, I'm going to read out a question from the chat show because I, the chat box, because I know some people uh can't always see the questions in the chat box. It's from Leslie London, the OCA Chair, and the question is the city of, uh, sorry Sharifa, could you just uh switch your camera off a little? Uh, the city of Cape Town spends our rates money on legal action that is often unwarranted. An auditor general report noted that legal services were procured by the city irregularly. Findings against the city have noted that the city has pursued legal action perversely. What will you do to ensure that our rates are not used to pursue the agendas of senior politicians? Uh, we'll go to Kirsten again. First, let me find you. Okay Kirsten, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, just so I understand the question, um you want to, we want to know what we would be able to do regarding the city's use of uh the rates to pursue legal action when it comes to just legal action in general, usually against community. Is that correct?
Yeah, what will you do, you as our ward councillor, as our representative? What will you, what steps can you take to make sure that the city doesn't waste the rate payer's money on fighting ridiculous legal cases which serve only to uh enhance the interests of some of the top politicians?
Right. Well, with regard to something like that, as a ward councillor, there, there are limitations in what I can do personally. However, when it comes to the misuse of community, not just community, your, your rates or your, the, the money that's received from the community for legal actions, these are things that we need to, that I will we will open investigations into how often and how much goes into these services and specifically how irregular are they? Because this isn't just an Because this isn't just an issue that can be dealt with uh from a ward uh municipality level. This goes deeper than that. This is why we are in the, the current situation where we in, looking for new leadership to take control. Because at the moment, what our current leaders are misusing and abusing their positions to continue to oppress the communities uh who are simply trying to live a better life. So as a ward councillor, I will basically look into and address those findings. And work with others to bolster that investigation because it is not something that you should be faced by one councillor alone. It is something that many wards are facing and together we'll be able to have strength in unity to, to weed out what is exactly is happening.
Thanks Kirsten. Uh over to you, Claude. Should be able to unmute yourself now, Claude.
Hi, yes, um we have seen it in, in municipalities, in government throughout South Africa that the public purse sometimes is being used for personal vendettas um and all of that. And, and this is one of the discussions within our uh organisation and party that we have spoken about. We, we for instance have, have, have made this resolution that if any person ward candidate, PR representative within the council, government, wherever, gets involved in legal battles, that first and foremost, you will be personally liable for those costs at first until such time that is, if he's proven innocent, then, then maybe they, they can be discussed. But, but it, it has been, become quite clear in South Africa that the public purse is, is in many occasions used as if it's a piggy bank where people can just turn to if they want to oppress you, if they want to go against you, if they don't like what you do. They would use the public purse to um go into this legal best battles that can cost millions to the public. So, so, so from, not only from my personal point of view, but from my party's point of view, we are totally against it from a personal point of view. And as, as council, um we would, would, they would really be, have to be consultation um about legal battles for the future and and, and how they get approached, yeah. So, so what I know from my party's point of view, we are very clear when it involves a, 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 a ward councillor or PR representative within the council, the battle will start with yourself. So you've got to be very careful before you start uh to take people to court uh for frivolous matters, yeah. That's, that's our, our position on that.
Thank you, Claude. Uh Sharifa Job from the Good Party, over to you. Sorry, Sharifa, you disappeared behind several windows. You should be able to unmute yourself now, Sharifa.
Uh sorry about that, sorry about that.
No, it was my fault, it was my fault.
Thank you for that question. You know, um in the Good Party, we believe in economic justice. Um public um money should not be used for legal um battles. Legal battles is your own personal liability. I myself am against it from my own personal point of view. The Good Party says your money is your say. The money is in a budget, we will do a budget from the, the money that is raised from rates and taxes so that you will have a say in that how your money is prioritized to be spent. Um and um we, we want transparency. The Good will introduce processes for the community to decide how to spend their municipal budgets. We should not be, we should not be misusing um money for, for, for legal battles. There must be, always be economic justice and transparency where our wards and we are communities are concerned.
Thank you, Sharifa.
Thank you.
Switch your uh mic and camera off again. So we've, we've come to the end of uh today's meeting as usual. Uh it is being broadcast uh live on uh Facebook, but that also means that um I'm sorry, I'm just trying to switch it. Um the fact that it's being broadcast live on the OCA's Facebook page means that uh it will be saved there. So if you know of people who wanted to attend today's meeting but were not able to, uh they can always go back and refer to it on the OCA Facebook page. Uh I hope everyone's noticed, I've put up a poll uh on the meeting. Um so far fourteen uh of the thirty-two participants have uh responded to the poll. Um I think it would be very nice for everybody to express their opinions on how the candidates uh performed. Uh the question in the poll is based on their responses to question tonight. Which candidate would best make your voice heard in the city? Uh I set up the poll just before the meeting started and that is why Piko Ngonyama's na, the ANC candidate's name is there. Um if you think he gave some good responses to, tonight, even if he wasn't with us, welcome to vote for him. Um so now I see nineteen out of thirty-two people uh have voted. Um we're going to be closing the meeting in about one minute. Uh we will publish uh the chat, although I think we've dealt with questions in the chat. Um but they will be published uh on the OCA Facebook uh page. Uh and there you can still find the recording of the previous two town hall meetings. And uh obviously you'll find the recording of today's meeting there as well. Um for those of you who live in Observatory, please remember that these uh town hall meetings have been hosted by the Observatory Civic Association. The Observatory Civic has its AGM coming up in the first week of December. And uh obviously the more people who join uh the OCA, the more influence the OCA is, sorry, the OCA can have in the kind of activities that it uh conducts, the campaigns that it drives. Remember, the OCA really is the main force um in conjunction with the Gorin Aikona and other First Nations groupings. But it's the OCA that is spearheading the drive to get the River Club development stopped. Um and it's the OCA which is raising funds to get a High Court injunction to stop the River Club uh happening. The, the High Court hearing will take place on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of this month. Um so please, I am glad everybody who agrees with the OCA stance on this matter, whether you live in Observatory or not, whether you are an OCA member or not, uh we really would like you to um support us and support us financially as well. Uh we have a website, it's lesbic.org. Or you can go to the OCA's website, which is obs.org.za. Uh only four people haven't participated in the poll, maybe they wanting to exercise their right to abstain. So all that remains for me to say is that we're three minutes over time, so thank you very much for not having gone overtime. And thank you very much for your active participation in these three town halls. And we look forward to uh some interesting results in the elections this coming Monday. Uh last reminder, please, if you live in Observatory, go to our fa, uh our website, obs.org.za. Sign up and become a member of the OCA. And if you don't live in Observatory, but you still believe in the, in the struggles that the OCA is leading, then please support our campaign and uh get more information about our campaign, both on our website, obs.org.za, as well as the Lesbic Action Campaign's website, which is simply www.lusbic.org. And of course, don't uh hesitate to get in touch with the OCA, the way you have been doing in the past. Those of you who have my WhatsApp number, you're welcome to WhatsApp me. Um otherwise, use the email address that we've published each time, which is info@obs.org.za. Thank you very, very much, everybody. Have a wonderful evening. Uh those of you who would like to know how to contact the ward candidates, I see Kirsten's put her number in the chat box, Sharifa's put her number in the chat box. Um and I'm sure Claude won't mind if I compile all the phone numbers and uh publish them on the, on our Facebook pages and on our websites.